Good evening, everyone. We'll call the City Council to order at eight o'clock on Monday, February 13th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. In two republics which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are twenty-five items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Excuse me. Minutes of the City Council Meeting, January 23rd, 2023.
Counsel Dumas.
Accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? None. All those in favor? Opposed? The minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 315 Enforcement, Section 2, Non-Criminal Disposition, to ensure consistency with state law as submitted by the mayor and Board of Health, Order Number 23-108796.
Okay, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, then questions from the public, third, public speaking in opposition, and fourth, questions from the City Council. So we'll start, we'll open the first part, public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant or our solicitor in this particular case. Please state your name, city address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Jason Grossfield, City Solicitor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. These changes are primarily to bring our current non-criminal disposition ordinance up in line with state law, and this has been a tool that's been in the city's enforcement repertoire since the 1990s. It's been on the state law for some time as well, and it's an important tool because it avoids having to use a criminal process. It's one tool. It's not the one end-all-and-be-all, and there's a number of things that our local, you know, department heads will do to enforce our local ordinances. But importantly, to have this tool on the books, we need to make sure that our current ordinance is up to date, and most of these changes deal with making sure we have specific penalty amounts for each type of ordinance violation. So rather than having ranges like not less than 100, not more, you know, not more than 100, not less than 300, we need to be specific here. So that's a lot of the changes that you see. Some of the other changes involve either ordinances or local health regulations that were out of date, that we updated the names to have the current names that are on the books. Those are the general changes. I know a lot of it was discussed in detail in committee, and appreciate the work that Chair Pearlman and the committee members did the other night. And with that, I'm happy to answer any particular questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members? Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you. I have a couple of remarks that were emailed to us. I'm just going to read into the record from our department heads that were in favor of the changes that our solicitor just indicated. So the first is from Doug Diaz, our Director of Finance and Operations in Marlboro Public Schools. And so he said, "I spoke with Superintendent Mary Murphy, and we cannot recall the last time the $25 fee was enforced by a school administrator. We don't currently have a process for school administrators to enforce this fine. When we have issues with smoking, it is generally with students, and it is handled through the discipline track. The school committee has a tobacco policy, and all school campuses have signs that say 'No Smoking, No Weapons.' The policy and the signs do not have a specific amount listed." And then another comment was submitted to the City Council, which everyone has a copy of, from Director John Garseide from the Health Department. He said, "I wanted to offer some feedback I have received from the superintendent for your consideration. On February 2nd, I received an email correspondence from NPS Superintendent Murphy indicating that she was in agreement with the existing regulation and fine structure. Conversation today with Asbit Superintendent Hall stating he does not believe that their staff has been using this regulation to fine, but he is checking further with his administrators." And then received email correspondence today from AMSA Superintendent Lindsay indicating they have not used this regulation to fine since she has been at the school, which is 2015. Understanding that our local Board of Health regulation for smoking on school grounds has a $25 fine incorporated into it, we propose no changes to the corresponding fine in the non-criminal ordinance 315-2. So I just wanted to make sure those are read into the record. We'll have the report of committee later in the meeting as well.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any public speaking in opposition? Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Council. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and my apologies to the committee for missing the meeting. I had other circumstances, unfortunately. I do have one question as far as back to the tobacco, smoking. With current products on the market, there seems to be a bigger scope of smoking possibilities. Not only tobacco, vaping, marijuana products, et cetera, should we actually look at it more in a broader scope instead of tobacco? So, you know, cigarettes. And I think that's an important part to be covered, just in general, when it goes back to committee. Secondly is the way the fines are structured. You know, there's still a group of fines that are in the orders scattered. I'd like to see a table of fines that have it all in one place. The advantage is that at some point in the future, 50 years from now, the amount of the fines need to be increased. It's one spot that needs to be changed in the, you know, in the regulations versus correcting them all over. So those are my two comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in legislative and legal. Agenda Item Number Three. Thank you, Mrs. Lawson.
Communication from Council President Ossing regarding the appointment of Counsel Robie as Council Liaison to assist with the Multifamily Development Review Criteria and Guidelines Working Group.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Robie for taking on this initiative to represent us and the council body, and I would move to accept and place on file this communication.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Four.
Excuse me. Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance and the amount of $15,500 from the Mass Emergency Management Agency awarded to Marlboro Emergency Management to be used to fund the acquisition of additional equipment and supplies for an emergency shelter.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The grant is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptances totaling $175,000 from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism awarded to the Department of Public Works to be used for upgrades and repairs to the Wesley Water Treatment Plant and the cost for roof replacement at the Lake Williams Pumping Station.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The grant is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from the mayor regarding media transfer requests totaling $1,643,050 from various departments for fiscal year 23, which moves funds from and to accounts as outlined in the transfer sheets.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is referred to Finance, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding request for an increase in the spending limit for the Public Safety Revolving Fund for fiscal year 23 from $120,000 to $203,000.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is referred to Finance, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed order to amend the senior citizen property tax program, property tax work-off program to increase the amount of tax deduction from $1,000 to $1,500 to eligible seniors.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is referred to Finance, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Chad Carter as Executive Director of the Community Development Authority for a three-year term to expire on January 31st, 2026.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Carter took over this position in March, so I feel that there's no need for him to come in, so we'll move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Ten.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Diane Smith as City Auditor for a three-year term to expire in February 24th, 2026.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the reappointment. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was hoping it was going to go to personnel who could actually compliment her at work, because I think she's one of the most outstanding people that have worked for the city as long as she had, and I just want to recognize her at work instead of just approving it outright.
I understand. I think she would be happier knowing that you approved it and didn't make it go to committee. Any other discussion on the motion? On the motion to approve the reappointment? All those in favor? Opposed? It is, she is reappointed, vote of 11-0. Agenda Item Number Eleven.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Michael Hennessy as Director of Veteran Services for a three-year term to expire on March 23rd, 2026.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve as well.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the reappointment. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And much like the auditor, I'm sure that Mike Hennessy is very glad that this has been motioned to be approved this evening. I just want to take a second because I have the opportunity to work with Mike quite a bit for the Veterans Committee as well as my role through that to be a liaison with the Veterans Council, and I've seen firsthand just the tremendous job that Mike does, and we are very lucky to have him. I don't know how many folks at home know this, but the Veterans Agent helps all veterans in our community, and then since we share this position with the town of Sudbury, he also does quite a bit of work helping them to get their Chapter 115 benefits. It's a critical role for veterans so they can get the benefits that they deserve, and it's very helpful for the city because the city pays this money to the veterans outright and then is reimbursed 75% from state and federal officials. So that is incredibly important. He also does quite a bit of community engagement. He creates events to really engage our veterans community, and people at home who are looking to get involved can do so by finding the events on the Marlboro-Sudbury Veterans Services Facebook page. They've got an axe-throwing night coming up, and they do yoga every week that is free to veterans, so it really is a critical service. Last week at the Veterans Council meeting, I mentioned that we had received this reappointment letter from the mayor, and they took an informal poll, and they were all unanimously very excited that Mike had been reappointed, so I did want to just share those points and look forward to voting for that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. I'll put a selfish plug in that he also had him out to the Railers hockey game at the DCU Center.
That's right.
Anyone else? Any other comments on the reappointment? Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you. I won't try to repeat any of the things that Counsel Navin already said, but I've also gotten to work with Director Mike Hennessy, and he's really wonderful, has a lot of respect from the veterans community, these wonderful events he puts on, and I've got to work with him as well as part of the Veterans Committee, so I just want to also put my plug in, and he's wonderful, and we're lucky to have him here in the city.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Anyone else? Counsel Oram.
Well, I said enough's been said. He's probably not going to be able to get into this building, but Mike, I had the personal experience of inviting him to a Rotary meeting in Marlboro, and he got one of the best applauses from our audience than anyone has as a speaker. He's a great guy, has a very interesting history. If you haven't chatted with him, you should sit down and chat with him. He's a great person. I haven't heard any complaints from any veterans, so he's doing his job, and I just figured I'll put the plug in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Anyone else?
I think we should have had him in for he could hear all this stuff. Then he'd be looking for a race.
On the motion to reappoint the Veterans Director, all those in favor? Opposed? It is unanimous, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointments to the Council on Aging for four-year terms of Patricia Gollier and Leslie Begar to expire on May 4th, 2026.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve both reappointments. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? They are both approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointments to the Library Board of Trustees for three-year terms of Thomas Abel to expire on January 7th, 2025, William Bruin to expire on September 23rd, 2024, Ruston Kyle to expire on September 23rd, 2024, Janice Merck to expire on February 2nd, 2024, and Robin Ripley to expire on February 1st, 2025.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to the library construction, I think it's important that we just approve this tonight so they can continue their dedicated work to the library, so move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the five reappointments. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The five reappointments are approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Fourteen.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed order authorizing a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for rental project pursuant to special permit, condition number six of the Green District, Phase One.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope everyone had the opportunity to review this. I know for me it was interesting reading and surprising reading that we had the ability to do this. I did talk to President Ossing. He did some research and found out that in 2019, the council did approve a regulatory agreement for Avalon Bay. That was a development where, in fact, all of their units, 156 of them, were affordable. But the difference between this agreement and that one is that the Avalon Bay was only affordable through 2045. These will be affordable in perpetuity. It doesn't change anything with the special permit that we granted. It just references that special permit language where 10% of those units of the 235, 35 will be, 24 will be affordable, but forever. So I'm going to move to approve this, and I know that there is an order out there regarding affordable. I think at that point in time, I would like to continue discussion to see how much of this we could incorporate into our zoning language if possible. So for now, move to approve the regulatory agreement.
Motion made and seconded to approve the regulatory agreement. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The regulatory agreement is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Fifteen.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus on behalf of President Ossing regarding proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 473, Poles, Wires, and Conduits to amend Section 30, aesthetics and additional city requirements to address sitting requirements for small cell wireless facilities, including installation equipment.
Counsel Landers.
I thought you were handling this, no? Did you?
Send it to you.
You want me to take it into my committee?
I do.
Yeah, after tonight, we don't have too much, so I'd be glad to take it. So we refer this to Public Service.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee, and we will advertise the ordinance change. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is going to Public Service and to be advertised, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Sixteen.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding the application for special permit by Brian Martinelli on behalf of Dish Wireless to install three new antennas and a 5-by-7 platform on an existing cell tower located on city property located at 860 Boston Post Road in proper legal form, Order Number 2223-108710.
Counsel Landers.
Mr. President, I'd like to move this down to Item 24.
Okay, you want to accept and place on file and move it down to 24?
Yes, right, right.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the solicitor's communication and move it down to Agenda Item Number 24. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It's moved to Number 24 and filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Seventeen.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding proposed order of acceptance along with acceptance plan and description of easements regarding Gooddale Estates subdivision, acceptance of Jenks Lane as a public way in proper legal form, Order Number 22-108767.
Counsel Landers.
Mr. President, we will accept and place on file, and I will move this down to under reports.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the solicitor's communication and move it down to reports of committees. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is filed and moving to reports of committee, 11-0. Agenda Item Eighteen.
Communication from Assistant Building Commissioner William Payton regarding requests for approval of a flat wall sign Harry's Construction at 561 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is going to Urban Affairs, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nineteen.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding requests for approval of two replacement flat wall signs and replacement of a freestanding pylon, freestanding sign panels at the Home Decor Group, 576 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is signs in the Wayside District. They are replacing existing. I'm going to move to approve this tonight unless someone else has a concern and wants it to go to committee.
Motion made and seconded to approve the signs. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Signs are approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Twenty.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding favorable recommendation of Gooddale Estates subdivision, acceptance of Jenks Lane as a public way, Order Number 22-108767.
Counsel Landers.
I was looking at something else. Which one?
Item Number Twenty.
Oh, okay. This we will accept and place on file.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the Planning Board communication on Jenks Lane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one.
Communication from the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project regarding budget notification for fiscal year 24 and compliance certification policy.
Counsel Oram.
It is a notification. It's about the budget. Marlboro's up at 2.9%. We'll be spending $91,000 and some change. Well worth it when it comes down to mosquito control and preventing disease, so accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The communication is filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President?
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Board, Committees, and Commissions.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda Item Twenty-three.
Claims.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you. Move to refer the claims to Legal Department.
Motion's made and seconded to refer the claims to the Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? They're going to Legal, 11-0. All right, reports of committees, so buckle in, we've got quite a few. So I'll take them in my order that Karen kind of gave me here, so we're going to start with Public Service.
Well, I thought you were doing it by age. I wasn't sure, so.
I am. Go ahead.
Okay, Public Service Committee, they met on January 30th. We took up one item, Order Number 221008767. And this was communications from Kevin Hill on behalf of North Borough Capital Partners in order to accept Jenkin Lane as a public way together with municipal deeds in assessment. On a letter dated January 30th, Solicitor McMahon submitted a revised clean copy of the order of acceptance, which incorporates the edits placing it in legal form. The Solicitor's office received a new deed on January 30th, 2023, but additional edits to be made by the applicant to clarify the ease in descriptions per the city engineering division and to fix errors with the LLC state. Otherwise, it's in legal form. If the committee does desire to recommend, following the motion, move to recommend the acceptance of Jenkin Lane as a public way, subject to the receipt of an executed deed from the applicant and approval of the Legal Department. Also, I want to mention that on January 25th, we did receive a letter from the Planning Board indicating their vote to recommend that the Jenkin Lane be accepted as a public way and that the easements be accepted as municipal easements in the city of Marlboro. And on a motion of Counsel Irish, seconded by Counsel Brown, the committee recommends acceptance as a public way, subject to the receipt of an executed deed from the applicant and approval of the same by the Legal Department. I think I've covered everything, Mr. President. I wanted to get that in there, that the Planning Board did approve that, and I think, I mentioned the city solicitor, so I think we're all set on that.
So would you like this?
We spent a lot of time on that, and it went pretty well.
So you're looking for a suspension to approve?
I would look for a suspension, that we would vote on this tonight, so.
Chair of Public Service is looking for a suspension of the rules to address this this evening. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed? The suspension is approved, 11-0. Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Want to approve the order?
No, now we're looking to make a motion to approve the order.
Motion made and seconded to approve the order to accept Jenks Lane as a public way. The solicitors put this all in proper format. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Jenks Lane is now accepted as a public way. Karen, you can stop the clock. Next, we'll go to Finance. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on January 30th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We had five items on the agenda that evening. First order was Order Number 23-108794, communication from Mayor Viggen with transfer in the amount of $100,000 from Peg Funds to Marlboro Cable Trust to fund the operation of WMCT-TV for FY 2024. The mayor explained the splitting of the operational funds for a cable trust into two fiscal years avoids exceeding the $500,000 limit in unnecessary annual audits. Director Mayar addressed the transfer and new programming since his tenure at the station. On a motion by Counsel Pearlman, seconded by the Chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the transfer in the amount of $100,000 from Peg Funds to Marlboro Cable Trust for the operation of WMCT-TV for FY 2024. The vote carried five to zero. Next item was Order Number 23-108795, communication from Mayor Viggen with capital bond request bond request in the amount of $10,270,000, which, uh, includes various reconstruction of streets, drains, sidewalk repairs throughout the city. Uh, order number 23-108795A, the sum of $500,000B and is hereby appropriated for sewer construction and re, and or reconstruction. Order number 23-108795B, uh, the sum of $1 millionB hereby appropriated, be and hereby appropriated for water construction and/or reconstructing. Uh, order number 23-108795C, uh, the sum of $8,770,000B and hereby appropriated for street and infrastructure construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation. Uh, the mayor advised this, uh, early submittal will allow the city to get a, uh, get into the construction loop as many, uh, communities are competing for, uh, the same contractors for these projects. Uh, the mayor intends to use the, uh, future opera funding from, from the state to reduce the bonds. Any opera funding will require City Council approval. He further explained if the bonds are approved, uh, the city would, would ban first and not bond for at least a year. Uh, the mayor announced the lead service program is complete. Uh, City Engineer De Persio gave his staff the, uh, credit and thanks for completing the program that included over 1,000 lead services in the city. Uh, the mayor explained the costly total reconstruction and replacement of lines in a street versus overlays, which may not last as long, but greatly improves road conditions as are most cost efficient, effective. On a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, the Committee voted to recommend approval of the order number 23-108795, uh, bond re, uh, bond request in the amount of $10,270,000, which includes various reconstruction of streets, drain, and sidewalk repairs throughout the city. The vote carried 5 to 0. Uh, Chair Irish did call for votes on each bond separately, and they did carry 5 to 0. Uh, meeting adjourned at 7:42 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. We'll take personnel, uh, next.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee met twice since the last time that we were here, once on January 24th. There were seven items on the agenda. Order number 22-18690, the communication from the mayor to reappoint the CDA of Renee Protegdero, the term expired March 9th, 2024. Order number 22-18763, the communication from the mayor to appoint Joseph Delano to the Board of Registars of Voters. Order number 23-18784, communication from mayor with the appointment of Elizabeth Jelaski to the Board of Registrar of Voters. Order number 22-18764, communication from the mayor to the reappointment of Samantha Colset to the Library Board of Trustees. Number five, order number 22-18764, the communication from the mayor to, with the reappointment of Fred Haas, the Library Board of Trustees. Number six, order number 23-18782, communication from the mayor with the appointment of Dylan La Force for the Planning Board to, and, uh, item number seven is order number 22-18756, communication from the mayor with the appointment of John Harmon as a Human Resource Director with a term to expire three years. All of them were actually motioned by Counsel Dusset, seconded by the Chair, and then that was, they were all approved 3 to 0, and then we adjourned at 7:25. The next meeting that we had was on January 30th, and that started 6:45 PM. There were only two items on the agenda. One is the order number 22-18735, communication from the mayor with the appointment of Richard Tomonak for the Board of Health for a three-year term, and that was motioned by Counsel Dusset, seconded by the Chair, and that was voted 3 to 0. And then the second item is order number 23-18798, that's a communication from the mayor with the appointment of James Horton to the Planning Board to replace Matt Elder with a five-year term, and that was motioned by Counsel Navin, seconded by the Chair, and that was voted 3 to 0, and then we adjourned at 6:58 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Counsel Perman, Legislative and Legal.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee met Thursday, February 9th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, and we had all members present, other counselors, Irish, Landers, Ossing, and Wagner were also here, as well as Health Director John Garside. We had one very robust item on our agenda, order number 23-108796, communication from Mayor Vigil and the Board of Health with proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 315, Enforcement Section 2, Non-Criminal Disposition, to ensure consistency with state law. So, at the meeting, we started by discussing the public hearing that we just had about that upcoming. We reviewed the original letters submitted by the city solicitor to provide an overview of the suggested changes. Uh, Chair Perman then reviewed the substantive edits provided by the solicitor with the following overarching objectives, clarifying a specific penalty as required by state law, describing how penalties are applied to repeat violations, and updating the table of enforcing city personnel in ordinance or regulations which can be enforced by the non-criminal process. Director Garside confirmed that he worked with the Building Commissioner and Solicitor to also revise local Board of Health regulations. He affirmed that the non-criminal disposition ticketing is one tool that they have that's not frequently used, but may apply in instances of a third offense or when there is a compliance issue. Counsel Oram brought up that this is a useful tool, but reiterated that it should not be used all the time. Counsel Perman confirmed that the ordinance changes are effective upon passage and requested that the website be updated accordingly, which the city clerk confirmed. And then Counsel Roby brought up the need to update motorized scooters as is fined in the ordinance. Uh, she also mentioned the stormwater management and was curious about the fines listed. And Counsel Ossing brought up that items outside the scope of this ordinance update should be discussed later, so there's an opportunity for us to continue that discussion. Uh, and then we spent the bulk of our time talking around, um, Counsel Roby bringing up a point that the $25 per offense for smoking related to schools stuck out as different than the other fines. Director Garside then explained that the schools remain the enforcer and that this fine is unchanged, and that's why it was separate from the other ones, even though it is a Board of Health regulation. The American numerical value remained at 25 because of the conversations Director Garside had with the superintendent. This discussion was a lot of the meeting as to whether the Committee should amend this section to align with the other offenses. Uh, Counsel Perman reiterated the solicitor would attend the meeting on 2/13, so that happened, uh, earlier today. Director Garside also reiterated that there are state regulations that employ penalties on smoking, and that other local fines could come into play outside of the $25 in the table for school violations. Counsel Oram made a motion to approve the order, and then Counsel Ossing shared a point of information that there was no requirement to hold a public hearing, but we did so to allow the public to engage, just as we did with the transfer station permits. Uh, Counsel Roby then made a counter motion to move to amend number 24 to change the $25 fine to be in line with the other offenses in the table provided. Uh, neither motion received a second. A discussion continued about the fine, um, and whether it was considered to be low, which Counsel Landers brought up, so that students would be able to pay the fine. Knowing there was not a rush on this particular item, Counsel Oram withdrew his initial motion and made a motion, seconded by the Chair, to keep the item in committee until receipt of more information at the public hearing. And then on a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, and approved 3-0, the Committee adjourned at 7:32 PM. And, um, given that we had the public hearing today and there was, you know, middle discussion beyond the presentation from the solicitor, uh, I would request a suspension of the rules to remove this item from the Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee, um, put it back in the hands of the Council so that we can have a discussion and vote on it this evening.
The Chair has asked for a suspension of the rules to take this out of committee. All those in favor of the suspension? One, two, three, hands up, everybody good? 11-0. Counsel Perman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to approve this item as originally submitted, uh, and given the conversations that happened today and the communications we received from the, um, from the Director Garside and from the Director of Finance and Operations.
Motion made and seconded to approve the changes in the ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As I said before in the open hearing, and I apologize for not making the original meeting, I do think it's important to change the wording, so it covers more than just tobacco, but other forms of smoking. So, um, I was not prepared to vote on this, therefore pull it out at this time, but I know it was part of the original regulations to change the wording. So, if you give me a couple of minutes, I'll tell you the section and stuff unless you can find it. Mr. City Clerk.
Mr. President, can I do a point of order?
Absolutely.
I believe the ordinance says, um, in Section 4, number 24, Board of Health Regulations, smoking, which is anything smoking, and other uses of tobacco products in school buildings. So to me, that smoking covers anything and everything.
Well, if there's a reference to tobacco, then I would include tobacco and marijuana because that's not legal. That would be the change.
Just again, as a point of information, if you're gonna include and expand the scope that requires re-advertising, so if, if you really want to get on that path, I would suggest you put, refile this amendment to the ordinance to do that, but it's your call. I'll continue discussions.
Point of information as well, nothing to criticize or anything, but, uh, these are fees, non-criminal disposition fees that are added to present ordinances and Board of Health Regulations. So, they would be the ones that would look at changing or adding other types of legislation within their body. Then, it could come back here to look at a fee, a non-criminal fee for that. So, that takes a little time and it has to get back to the Board of Health, so I would suggest that can be done, but not tonight. So I would ask that we table that or have the counselor go to the Board of Health and see if they can change their regulations as it relates to tobacco and marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Counsel Wagner.
Thank you, um, thank you. I would agree, let's not complicate this unnecessarily, there's other substances that people smoke, so are we going to think of everything possible that could be listed? Or keep it general, smoking, and, and have this follow what it's intended to do? And in cases like the school, they use other, this other, this other avenues, remember this is just a tool, there's other avenues to address issues, and that I would strongly caution us, if we're gonna start listing things, think of all the things you could possibly have to list for smoking, because that's the road we're going down.
Thank you, Counsel Wagner. Anyone else? Counsel Roby.
Thank you. Um, while I agree with the comments that, in, expanding on smoking is probably not necessary, I guess I will be stubborn, um, because this is before us now. I'm going to move to amend, I believe it's Article 4, Chapter 315, 2, Table Row 24, as amended with the new language to strike number, to strike $25 per offense and insert $100 per offense. And I know we got the information from multiple superintendents, but I'm sorry, as someone who was, although a while ago, on the school committee, there are a number of people in our schools that are not the students. The teachers, the parents who pick up the kids, they're smoking. They're, the teachers are there all day long. You can't tell me that they're not taking a break in their car in the parking lot, smoking? And maybe they're not, but I, if in fact they're only using discipline, and it's working, that's fine, but if at some point in the future it doesn't work, why, if I'm smoking at City Hall, am I gonna get fined $100? But if I go smoke at Marlboro High School, I'm only gonna get fined $25. There needs to be equity, so that's my motion.
Thank you, Counsel Roby.
And I'm sorry, it's, I, because I didn't know this was coming up, it's not 10 words, I don't think it needs to be in writing.
Counsel Roby. Counsel Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, uh, argue that you're, use the word equity, you're usually really looking at equality, you want them to be the same. Equity is we respect what the school officials have said, how they handle it, they don't see it as a problem. I personally haven't witnessed, I don't have any evidence that any, um, parents are smoking or teachers are smoking on school property. I feel like if that was happening, the school officials who are at the schools would be addressing that. The fact that they said they don't need to be this addressed, this is really a matter of, if you want equity, let's respect what the, um, officials want, let's keep it what makes sense in each different situation, and I don't see in this case why we, why we need to change it to address a problem that we don't even know exists.
Thank you, Counsel Wagner. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, so is there a second on Counsel Roby's motion? Counsel Navin seconds? Motion's been made and seconded on the amendment, on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment that's striking the $25 fine and raising it to a $100 fine? Any discussion on that motion? I got that captured correctly, Counsel Roby? Any discussion? Counsel Perman.
A clarifying question, would that be copying the first, second, and third offense? Or just saying $100 per offense?
I'll defer to Counsel Roby.
I thought about copying it exactly, but I, the $100 to me is, is the point that I was trying to make, that to me, discipline and repeated discipline and repeated discipline, maybe having to come up with $100 will do more, so I, that's why I just $100, one offense.
Any other discussion on that amended motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Does this mean this needs to be advertised again?
No.
Because it's a change in the actual fine?
It will be advertised if we approve it, this, but this is just a dollar figure.
Okay, just one clarification.
Any other discussion on the amended? Counsel Oram.
We have to be very careful about how it's presented. You have to, a non-criminal have a first, second, and third offense, so I think Counsel Roby was trying to say not just for the first offense, but $100 in each one of those offenses, if I'm not mistaken, so it would say first offense, 100, second offense, 100, third offense, 100, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Counsel Roby.
Maybe the verbiage should be, because it currently says $25 per offense, so my language would be $100 per offense.
Right.
I don't think I clarified that, so yes, I would.
Counsel Oram, all set? Counsel Landers.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. President, what is it at City Hall? Is it a $100 every offense, or does it graduate up?
Graduates up.
It moves up. 100, then 200, then 300.
Well, you know, our conversation a few minutes ago, that if anything, it should be the same. Why, is the school department different than, uh, City Hall? Personally, I think $25 is fine for the school department, I really do.
And I think you all received the communication from, uh, Director Garside that has that been in the school policy of $25 since 1990? Someone help me.
1993.
19, it's, away.
Till we stopped smoking in the, uh, on the grounds, and, and some people stopped on the school, school building.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please stand and signify. Hand's not gonna work. Two in favor, those opposed, please stand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I'm eight, so it does not carry. On the motion to approve the submitted changes to the Ordinance 315 on Non-Criminal Disposition, any further discussion? Seeing none, this is an ordinance vote, so it goes, has to go through the four stages. All those in favor suspending the first reading and approving the second? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, so everybody's good? Eleven, so that phase, that one approved, 11-0. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, that passes. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, please signify. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, that passes. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? I'm just asking. There is none. The ordinance change is approved. Thank you, councilors. Um, Urban Affairs is next. Counsel Perman, thank you very much.
All right, you saved the best for last. Let me see, I think I'm missing a page. I was shuffling through my papers. I, we have reports from two meetings, however, I'm, sorry, I have too many pieces of paper here in front of me, and I have lost.
I've got them if you want them, if you need them.
Nope, I think it just got stuck with this one. February 13th, February 9th. All right, we'll start with January 24th, those are the ones I'm missing. I'm just gonna thank you. Whoa, way too many pieces of paper tonight. All right, the Urban Affairs Committee met on Tuesday, January 24th, we had one item on our agenda, order number 22-108723, the application for a special permit from Markel Frink and Davino Olivera on behalf of All For Love to operate a dog, oh my goodness, typos, dog grooming business at 75 Lincoln Street. The Chair began by listing items, Committee received the transcript of the public hearing, the petitioner's draft decision, manager's comments, and a copy of relevant City Code, Chapter 650, Article, or 650 zoning article for existing and non-conforming uses. Ms. Frink described their business as dog grooming, but the property would generate rental income from the two residential units on the site. There would be no daycare at this location. Chair Roby discussed the need for a draft special permit decision, as what was provided didn't fit the legal requirements. Ms. Frink emailed a new draft decision to the City Council at 7:45 PM on January 24th, and she provided a copy to the Chair, and copies were made and distributed to everybody at the meeting. Chair Roby then discussed the issue of the site's status, is it pre-existing, non-conforming, or not? For this discussion, the Committee should assume it is pre-existing, non-conforming with the business, with very little traffic going in and out versus potential traffic and noise with new use. Members of the Committee asked questions of the applicant. Chair Roby read some of the ZBA decision for this site from 2020 with a denial for failure to comply with city zoning, specifically that a roofing contractor yard was not allowed in this RB zone. The zoning code does not list dog groomer, but prior building commissioners may have used consumer service establishments in the table of uses. Consumer service establishments are not allowed in the RB zone, nor are mixed uses retail sales and services, or dog kennels, or animal hospitals. Chair Roby stated that criteria for a pre-existing, non-conforming use to be extended or altered requires a determination by the City Council that the expansion or alteration of a non-conforming use or structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, non-conforming use. Counsel Navin received complaints regarding speeding and backed-up traffic from the light at Bolton Street to the light at East Main. He expressed concern for the new use at the lot backs up to Chandler Street, another residential neighborhood. He stated the proposed use would not generate much, would generate much more daily in-and-out traffic on a regular basis. Counsel Landers recounted the history of the site and the current owner's shop, a relatively quiet place. He questioned Ms. Frink's interest in Marlboro at the site and whether she expected a lot of businesses there. The rental income from the two apartments on the site and Marlboro's dog population at 6,000 registered were two of the reasons for her interest in this location. Ms. Frink stated the business has a good following, so she does not need Ms. Frink stated the business has a good following, so she does not need to be in a commercial area. She's not concerned, as she already has many clients from Marlboro that travel to her business in Midway. Council Landers replied that there are no other businesses next to 75 Lincoln Street. Council Dusset expressed his understanding of the requirements when changing from one business to another, but agreed that there is a shortage of groomers to handle the business. Council Robey reviewed the draft decision and asked councilors for their preference whether to move forward or to hold another meeting. Council Landers stated he was unsure another meeting would be useful, as this site is not the right place for this business. Council Wagner stated she understood the pros about having the rental income, but the impact on the neighborhood would be detrimental, and she's not seeing a compelling reason why this is a unique situation that calls for a special permit for this location. She also stated she would welcome the business to Marlboro, but not at this location. She did not believe additional meetings would change those concerns. Council Ossing stated the use of a dog grooming business in a residential zone is a difficult leap from a nonconforming furniture upholstery repair business, and would be a challenging precedent going forward for others that would want to do similar activities in a residential zone. And there was no further discussion. Council Landers moved to deny the grant of a special permit to All for Love, as their use of the site as a dog grooming business is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use. Motion received a second and carried five to zero. And I do not have it in here, but is, I guess I would like to ask to suspend the rules for this to go to the solicitor, to be put in proper form, to make sure we have the correct language of the denial in the special permit.
The chair's asked for suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, the suspension is approved. Council Robey? Do you want to make the motion to?
Move to refer this to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Motion made and seconded to refer this to the solicitor to put in proper form. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's going to the solicitor, 11-0.
Thank you. The next meeting that we held was Thursday, February 9th at 7:35. We had two items on our agenda. The first one was order 22-108-874, a special permit application by Attorney Falk on behalf of Octo 48 LLC doing business as Action Precision Machining to convert a preexisting, nonconforming warehouse use to a machine shop at 269 Mechanic Street. For this item, representing the petitioner were Attorney Falk and Mr. George Manjo, principal Action Precision Machining. The chair began by stating the order would be reverse of the agenda, and invited Attorney Falk and Mr. Manjo to the well. Attorney Falk reviewed that the public hearing had been held, a draft special permit with conditions was sent, and the applicant had gone to site plan review for preliminary review. He also reviewed the site's former use as a commercial operation since early 1900s, and although the council rezoned the property from LI to RB in 2019 in anticipation of a residential project that never filed for a building permit, the property is preexisting, nonconforming, with the use by DN Van Lines until May of 2022, when Mr. Manjo purchased the property. The new use will be a machine shop, tool and die business. As this is a special permit, under Section 6, the legal standard the council can grant the special permit is a finding that the new use is substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, nonconforming use. He explained the applicant felt the council could grant the permit, as the use will be less detrimental. The use would have a lower impact, operating hours are shorter, and there would be less truck traffic with smaller trucks delivering and leaving the property. The chair then reviewed the draft special permit, read the comments from Site Plan Review Committee, including their recommendation to add a new section, a new condition to Section E titled Site Plan Review to read. The issuance of the special permit is further subject to detailed Site Plan Review by the Site Plan Review Committee. In accordance with the City of Marlboro Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit, any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of Site Plan Review shall be further conditions attached to the building permit, and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant has complied with all conditions. Subsequent Site Plan Review shall be consistent with the conditions of this special permit, and the plans submitted, reviewed, and approved by the City Council as a special permit granting authority. No one had an issue with adding this. Next, the chair reviewed Condition 4, operations which list the hours as Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. She brought up a concern a resident mentioned at the public hearing regarding Saturday hours. Council Landers suggested adding language that there would be no deliveries on Saturday, but felt with the few employees, having them there on a Saturday wasn't an issue. Council members, or committee members, agreed on adding the language, quote, "no deliveries on Saturday," leaving specific language for the solicitor to add as he reviews the special permit. The chair then reviewed Condition 6 signs, and suggested to strike the draft language and insert, the sign would be substantially the same as the sign shown in Exhibit B, which references the photo in the packet, 69 Action Precision Machining. Committee members agreed. The chair then went back to the new Condition 2, which adds an additional sentence to what was read. Site Plan Review shall consider, among other things, the adequacy of the site's existing driveway for the use, options to improve drainage behind the building in the vicinity of the rail trail, options for visual improvements along the rail trail, including plantings, and options to improve screening for abutting properties. And committee members agreed. The final discussion was whether to add language for snow storage, and members felt that could be left to Site Plan Review Committee. Council Landers moved to approve the grant of a special permit as amended. Motion received a second and carried four to zero. I'm going to ask for a suspension. Do you want to just take them both, or do them separately?
Do this one now. The chair's asked to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, suspension is approved, 11-0. Council Robey?
I'm going to move to refer this to the solicitor to be put in proper form and back on our next agenda for approval.
Motion made and seconded to refer this item to the solicitor to be put in proper form for our next meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is referred to the solicitor, 11-0. Council Robey?
Thank you. The next item is order number 22-108-741, the application for a special permit from Attorney Terrence Morris on behalf of 272 Lincoln LLC to build a 12-unit multifamily dwelling with accessory parking to be located at 272 Lincoln Street. Representing the applicant were Attorney Morris, Ron Borg, the architect, and Charles Zamuto, the manager. The chair reminded members of the time extension that was approved until March 28th, and stated members have the draft special permit, minutes of the public hearing held December 19th, and comments from managers. Attorney Morris stated that they had been to Site Plan Review Committee with a number of minor changes to site plan, including parking and setbacks. Revised plans were discussed at Site Plan Review, were given to solicitors. Those of you who were not at that meeting should have found a copy on your places this evening. The chair read the comments from Site Plan Review Committee into the record, and then began reviewing the draft decision on a special permit. Chair suggested an amendment to Number 5 in the findings of facts by inserting and as further amended on February 2nd, 2023, after the words September 12th, 2022, and deleting approved by the Site Plan Committee on December with a blank 2022. No one had an issue with this change. The chair continued reviewing the findings of facts and the conditions. There was discussion on Condition 8, crosswalk painting specific to language of painting at a later time if authorized by the city engineer. It was agreed to amend the language by striking or at such later time if authorized by the city engineer, and deleting its successors and/or signs. Discussion continued on Condition 9, which was an addition from the Site Plan Review Committee, Cashman Street Improvements, with language that removed a sidewalk on the eastern side of Cashman. Members agreed a sidewalk was necessary, but also wanted the ability to park on Cashman. It was agreed to amend Condition 9 to read, "The traveled way of Cashman Street shall be widened to the extent possible along the site frontage while maintaining a sidewalk." Final details shall be approved by the city engineer. The chair then brought up the additional suggestion from Site Plan Review Committee on the billboard and its removal, and the timing of the removal. The language agreed to was, "The existing billboard shall be taken down during demolition of the building on the site. In the future, no billboard shall be allowed on the site." Next discussion was on snow removal. As a rental property, the manager will be responsible with removing snow. Committee members were comfortable with this being finalized by Site Plan Review Committee. Council Orm brought up traffic issues with turning from the parking lot on Lincoln Street. It was suggested that a sign could be put on the property stating no left turn. Council Pearlman brought up the corner of property, the Cashman and Lincoln Street, which was discussed during the public hearing, as having it be public space. After lengthy discussion, it was decided to not add any language in the special permit related to the corner of the property. Council Wagner moved to approve the draft decision on a special permit with conditions as amended. Motion was seconded and carried four to nothing. And again, I'm asking for suspension this evening.
There's a request for a suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, suspension carries, 11-0. Council Robey?
Move to refer this to the solicitor to be put in proper form for the next agenda.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the solicitor to be put in proper form after our next agenda, noting that Council Dumas will not be participating.
Thank you.
All those in favor referring to the solicitor? Opposed, it is going to the solicitor, a vote of 10 in favor, one abstaining. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none? Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, on to Agenda Item Number 24.
Order number 22-108-710, application for special permit by Dish Wireless to install three new antennas and a 5-by-7 platform on an existing cell tower located on city property located at 860 Boston Post Road. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Council Landers?
Okay, a motion to approve. Now, this has to be a roll call, folks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, my recommendation is that this is approved.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the installation of the Dish Wireless antenna at 860 Boston Post Road East. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions.
The City Council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, of the City of Marlboro zoning ordinances, grants to the applicant a special permit for construction of the use, a wireless communications facility on the existing monopole, subject to the following conditions, which conditions shall be binding on the applicant and successors and/or assigns. One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction of all structures on the site is to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the City of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and shall be built according to the plans as may be amended during Site Plan Review. Two, Site Plan Review. The issuance of this special permit is further subject to detailed Site Plan Review by the Site Plan Review Committee, in accordance with the City of Marlboro Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of Site Plan Review, shall be further conditions attached to the building permit, and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant has complied with all the conditions. Subsequent Site Plan Review shall be consistent with the conditions of this special permit, and the plans submitted, reviewed, and approved by the City Council as a special permit granting authority. Three, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application, and/or is amended or revised during the application hearing process for the City Council, and/or the City Council's Public Services Committee, are here and incorporated into and become part of this special permit, and conditions and requirements are the same unless otherwise altered by the City Council. Four, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant and successors and/or assigns agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances, as they may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. Five, all work performed on the site shall comply with this decision. No other building or construction or activity, including but not limited to any other communication device, WCF tower, et cetera, shall occur without further modification of this special permit. This condition shall be interpreted consistent with the federal law governing WCFs. Six, signage. No sign or advertising of any sort shall be permitted as part of this use. Seven, as a condition of the approval, the applicant will schedule and hold a preconstruction meeting with the Department of Public Works to discuss access to the site during construction. Eight, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the use, all required lease amendments authorizing the use on the site shall be completed in legal form acceptable to the city solicitor. Nine, the applicant shall comply with all applicable conditions for WCFs as set forth in Section 650-25F, each of which shall constitute conditions of this special permit. And 10, recording of decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant and successors and/or assigns at the expense shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed, so no appeal having been filed, and before the applicant is applied to the building commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the City Council office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office.
Councilors, you've heard the conditions. Is there any other discussion on the approval of the special permit for Dish Wireless? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Navin?
Yes.
Councilor Robey?
Yes.
Councilor Landers?
Yes.
Councilor Ossing?
Yes.
Councilor Pearlman?
Yes.
Councilor Dusset?
Yes.
Councilor Orm?
Yes.
Councilor Dumas?
Yes.
Councilor Irish?
Yes.
And Councilor Wagner?
Yes.
11 yeas, sir. The special permit for the Dish Wireless antenna at 860 Boston Post Road East is approved by a vote of 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number 25.
Order number 22-108-739, petition of Massachusetts Electric to install a push brace off pole number 18 on Mechanic Street, which is needed to support pole with wires going down Manning Street. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve.
Council Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to do is have a little discussion on this, and I'd like to call on Council Robey. As Council Robey, I believe you've had a conversation with the city engineer, and you're looking for a couple of changes here. Is that so?
So...
Point of order, does he need to make a motion first?
Yes, he does. So, you have to make a motion to approve, and then we can discuss...
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to approve then.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the order. Any discussion on the motion? Council Robey?
Thank you, Mr. President. As was mentioned, I was a member who sat through this. I'm not on Public Services. It was a lengthy discussion and well-appreciated for what needs to happen sometimes when National Grid needs to work with poles. And I know the original proposal was not well-appreciated by city engineering, which is why they wanted to go with the push brace. So that was agreed to. But during the discussion, I guess just the language that was there did not quite make sense to me, so through our administrative assistant, an email was sent to the city engineer who responded that he sort of agreed with my comments. So, I would like to amend, I think you all have a copy of this, it's less than the 10 words, but I figured having it in writing would be helpful, to amend Condition 3 by inserting the words, if possible, after the street side of the sidewalk, and striking the word "from" and inserting the word "down." So it would read, "Pole 05 shall be located on the street side of the sidewalk, if possible, and no further than 15 feet down from Manning Street." And I guess I wondered the "if possible," because during the discussion, it was pointed out that there is a pole currently on the corner of Mechanic and Manning, that that's what needs to be supported with the push brace. And because of where it's located, the push brace needs to basically be vertical with it. So if it's here, and the sidewalk is here, that's not going to work. So, if possible, they'll do it, but if not, it may have to go on the left side of the sidewalk. The issue that was brought up by the resident at the corner was, it cannot go on her property, which we definitely don't want, but I felt that there should be some flexibility for the National Grid to put it where it works for them. So, that's my motion. Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? So it's adding the words "if possible," and deleting the word "from," and adding the word "down Manning Street." Council Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just, you know, looking at this, you know, understanding the situation, so I agree with what Council Robey is saying, but just a little bit more clarification. Instead of "down Manning Street," is it east on Manning Street? Orientation versus look...
If I may, so I guess my issue was...
Down is a relative term. East is a direction. I'm trying to get the...
The main pole is here. They want to put a pole on Manning Street. The way it reads now, it says, what does it say?
Because Mechanic's going north-south, so this would be east on Manning. I just, I want an orientation and direction versus down.
I'm going to ask for suspension of the rules to have the city engineer decide what word he would prefer.